President of the Federal Legion. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic, the one nation, the people. Thank you. You need to see this. We'll start in one minute.
This is the broken chair.
Oh, David. Here, take this.
No, no. People still. I'm using for now.
The Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Six is called to order. Mahalo and welcome everyone to joining us tonight. We're gonna begin by doing a roll call. When I call your name, please state that you're present. TJ?
Present.
You're present. Joe Francher? Okay. Dean Harvest? Not here yet. Okay. Then Sylvia's gonna be out. Okay. Erin Mendelson?
I'm present online.
Thank you. Matthew Kirk? Michelle Maki? Present. Jun Yamamoto?
Yeah.
Present. And Jean Ishikawa, present. Thank you. Hey, thank you, everyone. We have quorum. Moving on to the first item on our agenda, our first responder, monthly reports, calling up our fire department.
Good evening. Ben Casemaro, Captain here at Wahihua Fire Station, representing the HFT. I'm gonna go over the statistics for May two thousand twenty-four. Rush fires, one. Nuisance calls, three. One cooking fire, five activated alarms, one hundred and nine medicals, six motor vehicle collisions, two mountain rescues. Also be going over our fire safety tips and announcements. So this month's tip is mainly dealing with power outages. So Hawaii is fire prone with a year-round risk of wildfire. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, will increase that risk. The HFT encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family, and your property through advanced planning, understanding, and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. First, build a fourteen-day disaster supply kit. Just take an inventory of the items you will need that you rely on when there's no electricity. Plan for batteries and other alternate power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. Know your medical needs. A general list is available online at Honolulu.gov if you need more info. Using appliances during power outages. Avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Generators, camps, or charcoal grill should always be used outdoors and at least twenty feet away from windows. Turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment, or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges or spikes. For more tips and detailed information, visit ready.gov slash power-outages. Starting July first, the Hawaiian Electric Company will commence their public safety power shut-off program to reduce the risk of wildfire. As one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, Hiko may preemptively shut off power in identified high-risk areas during periods of forecasted high winds and dry conditions. This program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. The public safety power shut-off could last several hours or up to several days. The HFD and Hiko will continue to work with Board of Water Supply and other city, state, and federal agencies to lessen any impacts from this program. You may visit hawaiinelectric.com for more information.
Thank you for that report. Board members, any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Since you seem to be the spokesperson for Hiko.
For Hiko?
Hawaiian Electric. I mean, since you were talking about that.
Okay.
Do you know if someone needs the electrical because of some kind of medical thing that they're on? Do they get special compensation? Not compensation, but you know, does their house stay on?
I would say try and contact Hiko. Best-case scenario, try and plan for that ahead, maybe with generators. Or possibly you have some kind of photovoltaic system that you can store power. But once the power goes out and you need some kind of medical attention with that medical equipment, I think you're kind of out of luck if you're not prepared with generators. But that's not speaking from Hiko. That's just speaking from the fireside.
We got you. Don't worry. We got you. Any other questions from board members virtually? Questions from the public? Questions from the public virtually for a fire department? Okay, here in none, I do have one question. Just curious, you, I think you said a hundred and nine medical instances in the last month. Could that be because of the reopening of the Wahihua, well, Queens Medical Wahihua, like because it's open now that you're getting more calls versus it all the situations being directed to other areas, facilities?
No, I think that's kind of an average for us. It kind of didn't really depend if they're closed or open.
To a hundred and nine is not unusual. That's regular.
Kind of regular.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much then. Thank you for our fire department.
Hey, thank you. Nice night and safe.
And calling up, we have our police department.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Scott Viera. This is Officer Napoli. We both work out of the Wahihua Police Station, and I'm on the night watch. He works days, CPT, Community Policing. The statistics for this month, there were three assaults, three burglaries, one robbery, three unauthorized entries into motor vehicles, and there were six hundred twenty-six total calls for service during the past month. A safety tip I'd like to provide for this month is just lock your vehicles. I know it seems simple and common sense, but a lot of times we forget. In investigating cases, a lot of times we'll see video of neighborhoods, and there'll be people or kids, sometimes adults, just walking past and just flipping handles, waiting for an opportunity. So simple to prevent, lock your vehicles. Sometimes it's inevitable. You can't prevent it if you're gonna break the glasses. Another thing is don't leave valuables in the car. Wallets, purses, sometimes they're forgotten. But if you can remember, please don't leave valuables in the car. That's all I had. Any questions?
Yeah, board member, go ahead.
I was by the freeway exit, and it looked like there was a body under a yellow tarp. The sad body.
So, okay, this, I can share what limited information I can provide. I will do so right now. So at about nine thirty-three hours this morning, there was a report, I guess a hacker in the area found an unresponsive male near his campsite in the homeless encampment there. HFD and police recall, they ended up bringing the body up to the road. That's probably what you saw, but it was on the riverside. It was a forty-eight-year-old male, and at this time, there was no obvious signs of foul play. Our detectives came out, and they're gonna continue the investigation and do the autopsy, but that's all we have right now.
Can we, just for clarification, when the hackers found the body, it was like Lake Wilson kind of in that area or above?
I don't know the exact area, but even like the medical examiners didn't go to the actual place until after, but it was found near a homeless encampment. They just, the only thing that I was able to get was on the riverbank. They didn't specify where, because I guess it's kind of complicated in there. So I don't know the specific area. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's, I just wanted that clarification. Board members, any other questions? I'm sorry. Oh, Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. LT, in your opinion, what is the amount of personnel that we currently, well, yeah, factual, what is the number of personnel we have out here for servicing District Two? And what is the recommended amount of personnel we should have?
Oh, you know, do you know? Usually there's about twelve policemen, four for Milani, four for Wahihua, and four for the North Shore. But as a whole, the Honolulu Police Department is running a little short, but we're doing our best to try to get recruits to come in. But yeah, usually it's five, five, and four, but it's four, four, and four right now.
Okay, so basically two, two beat officers short.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Erin. Go ahead.
Hi, Officer Viera. I'm not sure if this is directed to the police department, but I've been seeing more signs on buildings saying prohibited to carry firearms. If it does, if a building doesn't have a sign, then are we to assume that fire, concealed firearms are allowed in the building? Have laws sort of changed in terms of carrying weapons?
Yeah, so you know, the carry concealed law that wasn't passed, it does specify where you can and cannot. So some businesses will put signs that they prohibit it, prohibit from entering their establishment with the firearm. So if it doesn't have one, I'm assuming as long as you're following the rules of the permit that you obtain, it should be okay.
Okay, and then generally, it's probably not in school zones, public parks.
Definitely not in school zones, I mean, like the shopping centers and stuff. There's a lot of specifics where you cannot bring it.
Okay, where would we find that information? Is there, just look at the statute, I guess, or would you know?
You can look up the statute, and there even, because it's such a relatively new and controversial law, you might want to check Honolulu PD might have something on it. HonoluluPD.org is our official website, and there's actually a lot of information on the newer bills and some of them are popular ones.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from virtually or here in Wahihua? Any question?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Dean.
I'll tell you one more quick thing. I'm sorry, I saw the news yesterday regarding PPE, or actually for citizens' use, a what appeared to be looking like a forty-five semi-automatic pellet gun. Have you folks seen or heard, any heard anything on that being allowed or legalized?
Is it the Brenner gun you're talking about? No?
I'm not really sure. It was a really quick, I just saw the ending of the, cut the ending of the news story. I was trying to follow up more on it, but I haven't been able to locate the company name or anything.
Yeah, Brenner is one of the companies that they use, and at one point, they were selling it at the malls, eighteen and over, and it looked like a real pistol. So I don't think they're selling it on the malls, in the malls anymore, but I think you can still own one, because it shoots a little pellet. It can shoot a gas pellet, a pepper spray pellet, or a lead pellet.
Okay. Um, I don't, my thing is that, you know, being a former PO, and you, how do we know that's not a real gun?
We don't.
That exactly, exactly.
I've seen guns look like Legos. They make them look just like a Legos, and they pull them out on the policeman, and the policeman still has two, three seconds to try to realize if it's a real gun or not. By that time, the policeman gets shot. I've actually seen guns like this, seriously, that look like a cellphone.
Yeah. I got you on that. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions from the public? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to call up the mayor's representative, Kevin, if you can join our police department. And we'd like, we just, at this point, we'd like to get an update on activities or progress on the Avocado Street situation.
Sure. So after the town hall meeting, the mayor asked Deputy Manager Director and JRM and Chief of Staff Andy Sugg to follow up on the property, and he's, and those folks, both the Deputy Manager Director and Chief of Staff, as well as Director of Department of Planning and Permitting, and the Honolulu Police Department, met with the property owner several times. They made a couple of visits to his home in Aia and met on-site a couple of times here at the property. The owner was, what's the word? Not cited, but basically just talked, talked to the owner and warned, thank you. Was provided with a warning, and as a result of that, the building has been boarded up. The larger building on the corner's been building up, boarded up, and the smaller building the owners working on. I drove by tonight on the way over, and it looks like the progress is not as, obviously as swift as we'd like it to be, but at least there's activity on the property. There were two people in one of the buildings. They didn't look like they were permanently in camp there. They just looked like they were parking up for a period of time. And we continue to keep an eye on it. HPD's been great about patrolling that site routinely every day. So it's been helpful. Thanks.
Stand by. Board members, any questions?
It looks like they're building another building behind the one building. So were they given a permit?
Not that I'm aware of. Their only permit that they have is for the two, the smaller building, which is under construction now, and the larger building, which has been boarded up.
Okay, so the smaller building that's under construction, it looks like it's almost a separate building behind it.
I didn't see that when I drove by.
It's a hollow tile wall.
Yeah.
I remember in a meeting we had, and I could be wrong, but someone did start construction on there. They made a check, and they didn't have the appropriate permit for that. I think it was halted. When did you go by and see that activity? Was it recently or?
Yeah, it's happening now, the time it seems.
So DPP made a deal with him where if he didn't start building, we were gonna demo it and charge him for it. So that's why he needed to start building something. So he must have a permit. Because we talked to DPP, they said, if you don't start building and cleaning up the area and fixing it up, we're gonna end up demoing the place and charge you for it.
It's just perplexing that they give him a permit to build more when he hasn't taken care of what he has.
I'm not sure if it's, so that was the warning, basically. You get it under control, you get it underway, or we're gonna come in and knock it down. I mean, that, to be frank. But I think it's this, I'm just, I think we're talking about the same building, the smaller one in the back. That's the one that's currently under construction.
Great. Okay. Go ahead, TJ.
Just wanted to share, so, let's see, the property owner was given a demolition permit little over two years ago, and within that two years, he had to do something at least every six months. When the conversation that you folks had with, that the city had with him, he agreed to continue to maintain his property, and part of that was constructing that hollow tile wall that you see on the property now. So that piece, I think, was swept up into his demolition permit, but it also gave him opportunity to block off that area alongside Lake Wilson, because that's where a lot of the people were coming up was from Lake Wilson.
From behind.
Yes, from behind. So the problem is that there are so many different owners for the area that's behind. So part of his kuliana is to block off his area, which is what the tile wall is doing. It's supposed to stop the people from coming up from the lakeside so that the state and the military can take possession of their area and be responsible for it.
And just to.
And he's doing that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, and to dovetail off of what TJ said, actually, like when this whole thing started last year or the year before, we were told there were four property managers, the city, the state, the federal, and that private property owner. So in the beginning, they were saying, you know, it was such a mix-up of who had what property, and nobody wanted to take responsibility, and then it came to what it was. So we appreciate what's happening now, but, so do we know who owns all those, if, is it true that there are four property owners? And if it is, where are, where, what are the other owners doing? Okay.
Yes, and I'm sorry, so that area is actually, has three different parties that own it. One is the private property owner that we know about. The other is the state, and the other piece is the military. Now, as far as the city and county's jurisdiction, that is only, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, six feet from the highway or ten feet from the, from the, from avocado? Is it six feet in?
Six feet in from the curbing, it would be in, from the road, from the roadway going on.
Yeah. Correct. Yeah. Yeah, by himself. Yep. And, and it is, it is the lakeside where there are differing owners and, yeah, it's a hard one to get straight, but he does own that piece by himself with the two.
He owns the property with the two homes on it. He's a sole owner.
With the two structures. Yeah, right.
Yeah, and that's within the city's jurisdiction, and that's on the mayor's radar.
Right.
And HPD is doing a great job of patrolling, and we are on top of that property owner. So he either complies, or it's the warning stated, we'll take it down.
And last question.
So far, so good.
The owner has been, you know, keeping up on his side of the deal. We just want him to maybe move a little faster.
He's cooperating, basically, right. Okay, so I did get one question. I was asked to ask a question, and the person just wanted to know, so moving forward, what happens to the house where they were doing the illegal gambling that's, you know, kind of kitty, kitty corner across where on, you know, on Walker Avenue, that intersection of Walker.
Where there was a shooting?
Yeah.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
That's still the owner's home.
Okay.
Stuff can go down tonight. Yeah, and I can't say.
Okay, enough said. Okay, we, okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for HPD? Virtually, anyone, any other questions for HPD? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. Round of applause for our HPD officers. Thank you. Our first responders, they do such great work, so we always appreciate them being here. The last thing, moving on to item number three, would be our monthly reports, and we're calling up our federal representative. So is Congresswoman Fulkud's office, Nicole? Virtually, Nicole? I don't see. Okay, okay, we'll call on her a little later. We'll try again. Calling up our Army.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lieutenant Pike. I'm the Army Community Liaison. So just a couple of announcements from us this month. The US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on June twenty-fifth at the Capella High School, beginning at eight thirty AM and ending at two PM. This is open to the public. Walk-ins are welcomed and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume, or application. For training advisory announcements, training in East Range area with Ranger Jungle Tactics, Small Arms, Blank Fire will be conducted from the seventeenth to the thirtieth of June. This will be day only from six AM to six PM. We're also gonna have aviation training on the twenty-eighth, which will also be day only. And we have upcoming artillery and mortar training running through the twenty-fourth of June, and with exceptions, this is gonna be day and night, light fire. And moving on to our final announcement. In accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act and the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the Army has published the Oahu Draft Environmental Impact Statement for Army Training Land. The sixty-day public review period is from June seventh through August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, for the public to submit any comments or concerns. I have more information on all these announcements over on the table here for anybody interested in further details. And that's all for me this month. So unless there are any questions, mahalo for your time.
Board members, any questions? Go ahead, TJ.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there a phone number that a resident can call if they want to talk to somebody, and they're not comfortable, they don't have access to email and the internet for submissions on the EIS comments regarding Kahuku, Pomaheha, and the other areas that this?
So that phone number is eight oh eight?
Yes.
Seven eight seven?
Seven eight seven.
Two one four zero?
Two one four zero. Okay, thank you. I will share that. Mahalo.
Any other questions from board members here? Board members, virtually, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
LT, you got an email or a website that possible applicants can go to to download the applications already?
Yeah, for more information for the job fair, interested parties can go to www.himwr.com. And there they'll find all the links that they need for further info on the job fair.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Any other board members, questions? Okay, virtually, any questions from any participants virtually? Okay, and here in Wahihua, any questions for our military? Okay, thank you. And I just want to remind everyone that there will be a draft EIS public meeting in Wahihua at the Lelago High School, our Lelago High School, on July eleventh from six PM to eight PM regarding this draft EIS public meetings. Board members that also did forward this information to you as well, so please feel free to distribute that as well. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for our military. Now we call up our Navy.
Hi, Jim.
Hello, everybody. Just a little bit. So first of all, ma'am, I think last meeting you had a question about an article you saw on Civil Beat, if that's correct. I wasn't able to identify that particular article about a sheen in the water. So if you want further clarification on that particular article, you can send me the information of that particular article, and I'll see if there's anything further to say about that. But what I can say tonight is, I've reported every month that I've been here, we've been reporting this long-term water monitoring system that we have, and the whole point of that system is to ensure that the water's safe. So to date, there's been over ten thousand samples that have been taken of the water system associated with Red Hill. Throughout that process, the water has been cleared, safe to drink. And that's not just the Navy's judgment. That is, under our regulators, which is the EPA, the Department of Health, all certified all of those tests that we've taken. Beyond the routine testing that takes place, if anybody has any concerns about their water, there is a hotline number that they could call, which I'll just give it to you now. Madam Chair, I did send it in my notes, but it's eight oh eight four four nine nineteen seventy-nine. And if you call that number, you have a concern about your water, any concerns at all, then somebody will come out and test that water. It's gonna undergo the same process that I mentioned. It's still under our regulators. It's still under the EPA and the Department of Health, so forth. So that's all verified, and to date, again, every one of those extra tests that have been taken, I don't have a number of how many have been taken, but every one of those has come up negative. So having said all that, understanding that we hear article, about an article about a sheen in the water and so forth, there was a fact sheet that was put together about sheen on the water. And again, Madam Chair, I did send that to you, and I have a couple of copies of it, if anybody's interested in reading that. But any reports that we've gotten of any of the sheens on the water or anything like that, again, they've been tested, have been taken, they've been certified by our regulators, the EPA, and the Department of Health. So want to reiterate, we encourage folks, if they have any concerns about the water, they can call that number, and every one of those tests have come up negative. So what's important to us is that the water remains safe. But if there are any concerns, there is a way that the public can, can ask about that. And so hopefully, oh, before I mention anything else, tomorrow, June eighteenth, from five to seven, Navy Region Hawaii is gonna be presenting findings on our long-term water system on an EPA-hosted webinar. So it's gonna be, it's Red Hill and Focus, it's gonna be on the epa.gov website, and then it's the Red Hill and Focus webinar series. So that's tomorrow from five to seven. Anybody can tune into that. Gonna get much more detail about these findings and these testings and so forth, much more technical detail than I was gonna get in tonight. But I hope that that clarifies your question, ma'am, or if you have any further questions about that particular article, I'm happy to get with you. And if there's anything else I can add to that, but I think the water testing that goes on and the tests that have happened already, I think, answer that question. But I'm happy to clarify anything that you have. Because I wanted to make sure that I answered that question that the board member had about the sheen in the water and so forth. I did not ask the closure task force to do a presentation tonight, but we do have Brian Cheplak. He's a representative from the task force. He is actually online. So Brian, if you want to introduce yourself real quick to the Wahihua Board and community?
Sure, Jim. I hope everybody can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
You're good.
Oh, perfect. Yes, and some of you folks may know me from my previous capacity as the Communications Officer for Wahihua General Hospital, but I've been with the Closure Task Force for going on about five years now. So more than likely, I will be attending this meeting right. So more than likely, I will be attending this meeting regularly, and I will be giving Navy Closure Task Force updates. Real quickly, I can, I'm happy to say that we are on track. We've just started our tank cleaning process, and we are on track to close those tanks, finish cleaning and closing those tanks by 2027. That's, and I have more detailed reports as I attend more regularly, but I'm willing to take any questions that anybody may have at this time.
Okay, Jim, do you have, because I can come back to Brian if you.
Yeah, we can come back at the end.
Yeah.
I'm just going to, I don't want to take too much more time. Just a couple of things I did want to mention, that RIMPAC is coming up. Not this week, but the end of next week. There'll be 29 nations that are going to be involved in that. So you can go to the US Pacific Fleet website, RIMPAC 2024, or you could just, you could Google RIMPAC 2024, and you can get a lot more information about that. Also, I do have more copies of the Molelelo Newsletter that we do at Navy Region Hawaii that has all of those phone numbers, anything about the Red Hill and the Safe Waters, Joint Base Safe Waters, information and so forth. But it also just highlights some of the things that we're doing in Navy Region Hawaii that we thought the public would be interested in knowing. So I have a couple of copies over here. You're welcome to grab those. But that concludes my presentation. Now, at this point, if there's any questions that anyone has.
Board members, any questions? Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't have eyes on the side of my head. I wanted to know, can you share any more information about the Community Response Initiative that is going to, that the.
Right.
EPA is wanting to dis, EPA is wanting to dis.
So the CRI, the Community Response Initiative, that is an EPA-led venue or forum for the community. So that is led by the EPA. As we understand it, they're reviewing it, possibly revising it. That's not something that the Navy is doing. We're a part of it. But it is definitely an EPA-led initiative. So we, at this point, are waiting to see what is going to happen with it as well. What I can say is, in things like neighborhood boards and the Closure Task Force and so forth, the Navy is still remaining involved, working with our regulators, and then making sure that we engage the community any way that we can. So we're involved with that, but that is, that is an EPA-led forum.
So when you say you're involved with that, is the Navy providing any information in support or not in support of disbanding that CRI?
Brian, do you have any, can you clarify that at all?
To be honest with you, that is, and just to give you a little bit of context to add to what Jim was talking about. The CRI is a result of the EPA's 2023 Administrative Consent Order. And that's really how it came about. Navy has very little say in what the EPA decides, especially when it comes to the Community Representation Initiative. We were attending the meeting. I know that there's been things in the media. However, it's really an EPA decision. So I'm not sure if leadership is in support or against what the EPA's decisions are. But again, those decisions are made independently by the EPA under their 2023 Administrative Consent Order. So I apologize. I know that may not be the best answer, but that's, that's all we have right now at this point in time.
Okay, my comment is that we have been hearing from within the community, both online and through personal text messages, that the Navy is uncomfortable with the situation as it is right now. And they are not happy with the way that the community is leading the conversations at these meetings in which the EPA is in attendance. Share any background, comment anything on that?
I don't have any comment at this time. Again, that's.
And neither do I, ma'am. Again, it's, whatever happens with the CRI is an EPA decision. And again, to emphasize what Jim was saying, if the CRI group continues or whatever decision the EPA makes, that's not going to keep the Navy from continuing to engage with the community in other forums, neighborhood boards, open houses, Governor's Water Committee, Committee on Water Resource Management, all the public events and meetings that we've been trying to attend and provide information and updates.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's one, that's one medium. Absolutely. The CRI is one medium, but we remain engaged in a lot of different areas. And everything that we're doing, as I said, is under regulation, and we're doing our best to keep the public informed of every step of the process.
Right, because I also saw on the news that the, I think it was on Hawaii News now, they said that the Navy was uncomfortable being in the position that they are. I mean, EPA, when all of this stuff is done, eventually EPA will go back to the continent. The Navy, you folks, continue to stay here and live and work within our community. So I guess things, when, when statements are made about the Navy being uncomfortable with whatever communication or whatever the community may say, it's, it's a little, it's a little unnerving for the Navy to come out and say that they're uncomfortable. Well, we are uncomfortable having our water system jacked up the way that it has been. So I guess everybody needs to take a little uncomfortable pill and figure out a way to get through it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Understood, understood.
Any other questions virtually for the Navy? I'm sorry?
Hi, Madam Chair, I have a question. This is Erin.
Erin, thank you.
Hi, I have a question. Has there been any compensation given to the families or the plaintiffs who have experienced medical needs?
Yeah. Did you have something, Brian?
No, I'm sorry. I got disconnected for a second. I'm back in now. Sorry about that.
The question was, has there been any compensation for the families that have been affected by Red Hill?
Did you want me to take that, Jim?
Yes. Did we have any comment?
So that, yeah, yeah. So it's still pending litigation. I know a few folks have been following the news. It is a civil case, and that case was closed nowadays up to the presiding judge, presiding judge to make a decision on compensation and exactly how much that compensation is going to be. Don't have a timeline on that. But that, again, is a decision that's not made by the Navy, that's made by an independent party.
If I could just clarify that, that the judge does have the case. A decision has not been made. So whether or not compensation will be paid to the victims in whatever amount or not has not yet been decided.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, TJ and Brian, is that within Hawaii State Courts? Federal courts, Navy Court?
It is, it is. If I'm not mistaken, Erin, it is at the state level.
Madam Chair.
Don't know if it went.
Okay, sorry. I'll direct it to Brian then.
Call him, I.
Brian, can you?
And I apologize because I'm having some, yeah, I'm having some technical difficulties. So I believe the question was, what level? Is it state, federal? I believe it's at the federal level, not at the state level.
Okay.
Because this is a federal, because Navy is a federal entity. And I believe the lawsuit was filed against the Navy. So it is at the federal level.
Okay, thanks, Brian, for clarification. I have one more question, Madam Chair, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
It's just involved of, a while back, the Board of Education presented some increases in the amount, you know, in our monthly fees for water. And part of it was due to, my understanding is that, you know, you know, the increased need and demand for water, plus now that we're shutting down some of the areas, and that there was a bill that the Board of Water is needing to cover. Will the Board of Water be compensated by the Navy for any additional charges or financial, you know, situations due to the Red Hill situation?
Yeah, ma'am, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I could not speak to that, to that issue. I mean, I can, I can take that question back, but I would not have an answer for that.
Okay, appreciate it. If you could look into that, you know, I don't, I know that's kind of a vague question, but whether or not the Board of Water will receive any money, federal money from the Navy or from other avenues?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And Erin, I can follow up with that question with our Board of Water Supply Representative for perhaps a response at next month's meeting.
Mahalo.
Okay. Okay, any other questions with our, for our Navy? Okay, I would like, Jim, if you don't mind, earlier in the meeting, you said there, there's a meeting virtually, everyone can participate at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM?
Yes, so that's tomorrow. It's a webinar. So it's an EPA-hosted webinar. It's on the epa.gov website.
Okay, so if anyone's interested, that's.
Anybody's interested, you can, you can go to their website. It's the Red Hill in Focus webinar. And the Navy will be presenting findings on the, on the water monitoring system, much greater detail than what I'm able to give you tonight.
Okay, so just as a repeat, go to the epa.gov website, Red Hill in Focus webinar.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Gene, I could give you the address right now if you'd like it.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So it's, it's epa.gov, backslash red-hill. And that'll, that'll bring you to the webinar page, and then you'll see it right there. You can't miss it. It'll be right at the top of the page.
Okay, got it. Epa.gov backslash red dot dash hill, H-I-L-L.
Hill, yeah, and a backslash, yeah. And then it'll, you just, like Jim said, just click on the webinar. I believe, my understanding is that you do have to register in order to participate. So I would suggest that everybody do register ahead of time.
And this is Hawaii time, 5:00 PM to 7:00?
Yes, ma'am, 5 to 7.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, Hawaii, yeah, Hawaii's time is time.
Okay, just in case anyone is interested, thank you very much. And Brian, nice to see or hear from you. Hope all is well.
Yeah, same to you. Nice seeing you.
Okay.
Point of information.
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
And NA, you can correct me if I'm wrong by saying this, but I'd like to remind everyone on the board that if we have a speaker and if we have our presenter or someone representing an agency, that we should direct the questions to them and not quote or the news media or something outside. Because this Red Hill situation is a very touchy situation with a lot of people in Hawaii. And it's, as it was brought up, a lot of it is still going on in mitigation in courts at different levels. So not to get the board involved in any type of pickle, I would suggest that we hold back our comments. Let the people who are representing the agency speak and let them answer. And if they can't answer, then they'll simply say, we can't answer as we heard. They cannot make no comment on certain things. So it's just a reminder, legal reminder, to bear to what you bring forth to the board as a member. Thank you.
Correct, Dean. And we are, overall, I think we pretty much, we do manage that. Sometimes it goes askew, but for the most part, I think we're, we're very conscientious of keeping everything on the straight and narrow for our board. And I think we're pretty good about doing that. Once in a while, we go off kilter, but for the most part, I think our board does pretty good. Okay, moving on, anything else with our, for our Navy? Okay, we're going to move on to item 3B on a government agency. And just want to, before I go on to announce, to call up Nicole from our Board of Water Supply, I do want to know that right now we have about 50 people online for our meeting tonight. So counting everyone here, we probably have close to 70, maybe 65 people participating in tonight's meeting. Okay, calling up Board of Water Supply, Nicole.
Hello, Chair, Board, residents, and guests. Sorry, I can't be there in person. End of fiscal year, so I'm just catching up with everything here at the office. Just want to make a quick note. I did jot on Erin's question. I don't have an answer for that, but I will follow up for next month. For our report for this month, there was one water main break in Wauhaua area in May. On May 8th, a 16-inch concrete cylinder water main installed in 1981 broke at 210 Kellogg Street. And our general announcement tonight is going to be our annual water quality reports. So every year, we work hard to ensure that the water served to all of our customers is safe to drink. So each year, we conduct thousands of tests on the water sources and our distribution system to ensure that our water meets or exceeds all federal and state safe drinking water standards. But we will be mailing out the results to all of our customers by July 1st. Some of you may have already gotten them, but they are available online already. So if you are eager and want to see, you can go on to boardofwatersupply.com and simply hit our water quality button. And all you do is just type in your address, and you will get a report that shows where your water is coming from and everything that we've tested for. So you can put in any address that you like on the island. It's actually very handy. Just a reminder that when you do go onto the report, it's always going to be for the previous year. So you're going to see 2023 annual water quality report, not 2024. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Board members, any questions? Just Michelle?
Hi, good to see you back. We missed you last month. I know for months, there was the Board of Water up at the top of Glen Avenue. And now they've gone a little bit down Glen, but it seems they're going down Palm Drive, Ames, and back on Glen, part of Glen and Kilaunae. So how long is this all going to take, do you know? And what actually are they doing?
This is part of the, the water system improvement plan. I can actually look that up for you and see how long that's supposed to last. I can, I can take the next question if you want, and then I will come back to that one. It'll take me a minute just to look it up.
No problem. Any other questions in the duration for Nicole from Board of Water Supply? Virtually, any other questions for Nicole?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
You spoke about the repairs, the water break main there on Glen and Kellogg. It's still not complete repair. So do you have a duration of what's going on? I know that you folks were waiting for some parts because a cap broke when they were repairing it. And then another part of the line broke. So is that why the plates are still out there or what?
Yeah, they generally put the temporary ones on so they don't have to completely go in and repave everything twice. But I can find out.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just wondering if they're still waiting on parts or is there something new or what?
I will find out and let you know, Dean.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicole, we can come back to you if you need a few more minutes to research.
Yes, please, sorry.
No, no, not at all, not at all. So everyone, we're just going to move on to item B2, which is State Department of Transportation. No report from FON at this time. So we'll move on to item four, residents' concerns and community announcements, and then we'll come back to Nicole. Any announcements? Just please go to the microphone and introduce yourself, what company you're with, and what your event or activity is.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Leah Thorne. And I come from Aloha State Outreach. We established ourselves back last year in September. And I'm just mainly here to announce that we're going to have a fundraiser to raise backpack for our keiki. We're aiming to raise 1,000 backpacks. And this fundraiser event is going to be held at Kaala Elementary School on July 27th. That should be the Saturday before the kids go back to school. We are going to have various vendors there to benefit the children and help them get ready to return to school. So we will have people that's there to cut the children's hair. We will have a keiki kookua closet, as well as an outreach booth for anybody who needs to sign up for public benefits, whether that's MedQuest, SNAP-TANIF, or has housing, needs housing information. So again, this fair will be at Kaala Elementary on Saturday, July 27th. I will be back again next month to make sure that I'm here to provide information. But we've been really busy with whatever limited funds we have and doing what we can around the neighborhood. So that's it. Thank you.
Leah, hold on for one. You didn't say what time. You said.
I'm sorry.
July 27th, what time?
9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
And it's open to the public?
Yes, it is.
And are you asking people to bring things at that time or bring it before the 27th?
We can work however. I do have some brochures on how to contact us. Basically, if you're looking to either want to donate or you want to help out, you can reach me via email or on our website at alohastateoutreach.org. And there is a contact us button there, and I'll get back to you as soon as I possibly can. The benefits are, all benefits are going to be going mainly to Kaala Elementary School. But we are aware that there are other keiki that need help. So whoever is registered, we're aiming to get all of that. So we are, that's why we're looking at the 1,000 backpacks. So any and every help, all the help we can get. Thank you.
And then what area of Kaala, in the front side or the backside?
We're looking at the parking lot because we're having food vendors come in. We're looking at having music and hula as well. So it's more like a community fair that's benefiting our keiki.
All right, very good. Thank you for that announcement. Thank you for being here.
Oh, yes.
You have a question?
We will have community health workers there to help you with that. So whatever is needed, we will be prepared to service the community. We may not be able to have the instantaneous answers, but you will definitely be able to talk to a community health worker, and we'll go ahead and get you started with that help.
And just want to remind everyone to speak into the mic so we can catch your name as well and all that. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other community announcements to make at this time? Yes, go ahead, TJ. If you can go to the microphone.
Oh.
The sound. Thank you.
How is our beautiful community tonight? Just wanted to shout out all the small businesses that have been in our Wahihua for a long time. And even not so long, but places like Sawatas and Dukes. You know, we've seen a lot of businesses close down, whether they be corporate or longtime Wahihua businesses. But I would like to reach out and ask if you've got an extra $20 or $30 a month to spend, find a business here in Wahihua and spend it there. Support our businesses so that we don't have to see too many more businesses closing down in our Wahihua. It's important. It's part of our, it's part of the blood that runs through our veins here in Wahihua. So please support a small business. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Thanks, TJ. Any other announcements at this time? Okay, we're going to check back in with Nicole. How are you doing, Nicole? Oh, did we lose her?
Yeah, so.
One second.
Okay, go ahead. Hi, Nicole. You have an update for us?
Sorry, Jeannie.
No problem.
I was on the phone with my field guy. So the plates, the plates are still there for the main break. Because it's part of the, there's part of the main replacement as well for the water system improvements. So. Sorry, so it's.
I was just going to say, basically, the metal plates are remaining there until the project is completed. Then is that pretty much?
Yeah, and in that area. So the main break part is complete, and that's all fixed. They got in the parts that they was waiting on. But the, the water system improvements plan project is expected to last a little over two years from January. So I can't tell you at this moment where, what areas they're going to be in for how long. But if you have a specific area that you want to know at any time, I can give you the number of the project manager. And you can call her anytime to know when they're going to be moving to a new area, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Her name is Sandy. I'll hope to be soon. Her number is 808-748-5730.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that connection.
You're welcome.
Yep, okay. Oh, one follow-up question.
So when this is all piled, is the whole place going to be repaved instead of splits in the middle?
Yeah, they won't, they won't make, they won't leave any of it looking junk. That'll be all nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And if they do leave any of it looking junk, just call us. We'll fix it.
Thank you for that. Dean, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Nicole, if you could just have the, I guess, one of the crews check the plates periodically. A couple of the folks that are living there in the apartments have reported at night, especially cars are speeding over the plates, making loud noises. And I guess the vibration is moving them off the, you know, that asphalt seal that they line it with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if they could just check it periodically, make sure the pigs are in place, maybe two to three weeks as, as long as the duration's out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Dean. Any other questions from the community or from the board? Okay. And we're asking right now if there are any other questions. Oh, no, she's standing up. Right, okay, okay. So no, but, so what I had asked, if any other questions for Board of Waters, are we done with this section then? Everybody good? Okay, thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome. Take care, guys.
And any other, going back to Alicia? You had a question? Did you, did you want to ask a question? Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Going back to our agenda, we are on, we did our residents' concerns. We did a little out of order just to catch up on things. We're on section five to make sure everybody's on the same page. Section five for presentations, rules of decorum. All participants at this meeting shall extend the spirit of aloha to one another. There shall be no displays of disrespect to one another. Public comments can be made within the stated time limits and without interruption unless the comments are offensive and/or out of order and are not conducive to civil discourse. So our first presentation on presentation A, our State's Agribusiness Development Corporation. We welcome Wendy Gady, Executive Director, the State's Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Aloha, Chair, and members of the board. I really wanted to introduce Roger Fossett, who is our new property manager for the area. And I also wanted to say thank you with a lot of humility for all of the help and the support from the community in working with our houseless folks that have been associated with ADC land in the past. And I think that we started with about 44 individuals, and now we are down to about seven. And this is, I think, is just an incredible opportunity to show what a partnership looks like. This is not something that we could have done on our own. And it really is the circling of the community with our houseless folks to help find them stability within the community. And I wanted to say thank you to everybody for that. And then I also wanted to just be advised that we are in the process of doing applications. Our Admin Standing Committee is actually vetting those right now. And the whole process is moving towards putting more people in the land to farm up here. Another update I wanted to give is hopefully by the end of this month, we will finish a conservation easement for our parcels six and eight, which would put our, those two land parcels permanently in ag. And probably the number one way that we can do fire mitigation is to put our ag land into use. And that is exactly what we're trying to do. And even though we're in the midst of doing application review right now for our first submission, if at any point that somebody has an expression of interest or interest in land, whether it's land in areas that we currently have land or you're looking for land in another area that we don't, if you could fill out an expression of interest or even fill out a land application, that helps guide the board's decision on where we should look, where we should look for executive ordered land, where we should look to buy land. But that's exactly how it drives our strategy. And then the last thing I wanted to tell you is that we're in the midst of our strategic planning and that I would invite you guys to reach out to me at any point with any ideas or questions that you have. It's kind of an ongoing opportunity, but it's also going to start with some community engagement in the months to come. So I wanted to let you know that. And if you have any questions, I'm here. Roger, you can stand up so we all can see your smiley face. He's a very friendly and empathetic individual, and I think he's been a really good fit for the ADC team. So any questions?
Thank you, Wendy. Any, go ahead, TJ.
Thank you. And Roger and Wendy, please thank your team, your team. You've been fabulous helping our houseless residents in Whitmore. So continue to reach out to the community and we'll continue to help you. But I did have a question about, you said parcel six and eight. Where is that?
If you would send me an email, I'll give you an exact location. I bring a map with me tonight, but it is in the Wahihua-Whitmore area.
So it's a, we're putting it that, we're putting it in conservation?
It's called a conservation easement, and it really isn't conservation. It's basically putting it in agriculture conservation in perpetuity, which means that we're not going to build houses. We're not going to, you know, build any kind of facilities. It's meant to be farmed actively.
Great, thank you. And I will send you that email. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Wendy before she, before she sits down? I was going to say.
I know that there was ag land, and I don't know if it was ADC or whatever, but there was ag land that was specifically supposed to be for small farmers off Kena. And, or not Kena. The road going from Schofield. Thank you. It left my mind. Off Cunea, up by the mountain there. But then people started building houses. What kind of precautions are you folks taking that that doesn't happen here?
That's our number one precaution right there, is to have somebody actively in the land on a regular basis circling around. And that has been one of our advantages, I would say, is by having eyes and ears on the land regularly. And some of those eyes and ears are in this room. And you guys let us know if things are going on that appear nefarious, that we could go and investigate. But I think by the sheer fact that we are adding staff in the new fiscal year. So Roger is primarily here. He's not going to be trying to cover Kauai. So he really is just focused on the central area. But the more that we have people in and around and talking to our farmers, the better that we can actually help the farmers with their business development. And I think that's something that has been sorely needed. But when you have the relationship of somebody driving around actively, you're seeing them on the evenings, afternoons, mornings, and starting to ask, hey, how's it going? And, you know, I noticed that you're not active over there in that 50 acres. So what's going on? Did your equipment break? Do you need help? Do you need a grant? Did somebody get sick? You know, what is it that you need to ensure that our ag land really goes, gets into farming and local food production? Because that's our number one goal at ADC.
And there is water set up everywhere.
I'm sorry?
Is there water set up everywhere?
You can never have enough water. You can never have enough water.
So is there sufficient water for all these farms?
I would say no. If I look you in the eye and tell you that, I would say no. And I think part of it is, you know, we have some wells. We have put in capital requests for the wells to get fixed. We had an incident on Maui. So a lot of our funds that were going towards water infrastructure literally got swept to the Maui wildlife, the Maui wildfire mitigation efforts. And so that will be something that we'll continue to work on. I just don't think we can ever have enough water, to be very honest. I think you always need to have a Plan A and a Plan B. So it's not enough just to say, hey, I've got this one line. You should always have another line because sometimes something happens, a pipe breaks. And unlike sugar and pineapple that drink more infrequently, cucumbers and tomatoes like to drink every single day. So that changes the amount of water that we need. But it goes back to Roger, working with people to find out, do you have enough water? Are you going into something like watermelon or pumpkins? And so your water need is going to come up. And we just have to have those ongoing active conversations.
And Wendy, hang up because we have two more questions, Erin and then Dean.
Hi, Wendy. Good evening. I have a question related to Michelle's question about the water. I know, I think the ADC recently, last legislation, received ownership of the spillways and dam. Has there been any restoration or improvement of those?
We do not have ownership for the Wahihua Dam or reservoir or irrigation. We are in the process right now of doing due diligence over those systems at the present moment.
Okay. Was that part of something that didn't pass in legislature? Sorry, I have a misunderstanding there.
No, I, you know, that wasn't something that was part of the legislative package under something that started before my tenure. And we've been doing our due diligence, the Department of Ag is doing their due diligence on the reservoir. DLNR is doing due diligence on the dam. And so everybody has to kind of come together after we work with engineers to figure out what is the state of everything. And then it really goes back to the ledge to find out if it's an acquisition that we can actually manage and what kind of funding it would require to get those systems up and operational to the level that our user base would like to have those.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Erin. And Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aloha, Wendy. What I'd like to suggest, ADC, contact OHA. OHA is in the development stages regarding the Kuukani Local Birthstones. And they have mentioned creating a cultural park around that area. And in doing so, they're looking at also things similar to what your ADC is proposing by getting local farmers to acquire some of the property immediately adjacent to the Kuukani Local. So I don't know if you folks can work hand in hand with that or would it be feasible or not at all because of the two separate agencies? But if you don't mind checking out OHA's avenue of what they're going to be future site for Kuukani Local, I'd appreciate that.
No, that's a great suggestion. And, you know, one of the things that's new and a little bit different, unique with the new board that came on with the new governor is the concept that in our statutes, we are to provide more local food for local people. It does not specifically say do local food for local people only on ADC land. So it does mean things like you're suggesting, Dean, that we reach out to OHA and anybody else that is trying to grow local food to find out how can we support? And in some cases, it goes back to how can we support from a water perspective, even though it's not our land.
Yeah.
But if you, if you wouldn't mind, if there's somebody specifically that you think I should call, my cell phone is 808-897-1225. And Dean, if you could let me know if there's somebody specifically you think I should engage, I would really appreciate that.
Sure, I'll get the person's name from, oh, I know Brutus is one. He's the one that's primarily, I've been talking with as OHA Affairs Chair. I can't remember Brutus' last name at this time, but I'll get ahold of Brutus and pass your number on to him. And then you folks can talk story about what's, OHA developing plans are for over there.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Aloha.
Thank you, Dean. And kind of to dovetail off of that.
I was just asked to repeat my phone number. It's 808-897-1225. And you can also text me. That's my work cell. It's with me all the time.
Wait, let me just to dovetail, to dovetail off what Dean said. I'm just wondering, Leah, is it something, I mean, is it something that, an organization that Leah has that, is that something that?
She's signed, she has a girlfriend.
To be on the same, I was like, well, you know, maybe that's something you guys, you know, we can help each other out for our community. So thank you very much. Okay, June?
Just, just since the topic of, how can I say, homes on Cunea lands? I actually did the census survey, not the population comp, but. So I had to go to every structure. And everybody that I suspected lived there because they had a bed, they had a sink, they had water coming. I don't know how clean that water is, but they had everything to live. I don't know how clean that water is, but they had everything to live over there. But they all gave the same answer. And I really believe that they were coached on the answer. And they all said, oh, no, I don't live here. Sometimes we stay late at night, but I live in Cunia camp. And everybody said, I live in Cunia camp. And so I believe that whoever owns the land has actually told them what to say. So hopefully that never happens on state land, right? But that's what's happening in Cunia. They just tell the same line, everybody says the same thing.
I think one of the best responses is in the past, when I've managed farmland, people ask, what's your hours? I said 24/7, you never know when you're here to see me. So if you're always doing the right thing, then you don't have anything to hide. And sometimes it's Roger, sometimes it's me that drives through. I've driven through on Sundays. Sometimes it's our contract manager, sometimes it's our executive assistant. So we may be in a vehicle that doesn't say ADC, it's not a white truck. But we're paying attention to see if people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, and I think a lot of it goes to ag theft is a very real problem. You know, and I think having more eyes and ears in the community and within the ADC staff, like always being around and being, you know, present so that people can flag you down or they start to get to know you, that really does help for an active and healthy ag community.
Okay. Hey, wait, don't go away. TJ, go ahead.
Just clarification. So Brutus left OHA about two years ago, but I can give you the most current contact information for the OHA rep. And I think Rep. Peruso will be able to provide some updated information on the dam, the waterway and the spillway. So.
Well, then I think I should relinquish.
Representative, do you want to join Wendy and do that right now? May as well. Roger, you can join them up there as well, too. It's a part. You have a lot of, you have a lot of participants virtually, so it's a good opportunity to explain more.
I would just support what Wendy has said already, which is that, I mean, I spent a lot of time talking to the engineers at DLNR, and they are doing their due diligence around evaluating the current status of the dam and the spillway. And I think that there is, they're in negotiations around whether or not the state is going to be willing to take that structure on. And I think that we should find out soon, though. I think that those deliberations and that study should be completed within the next couple of months at the latest. So, what she said.
I will volunteer that we have our Phase One completed, and our Phase Two should be probably towards the end of September, early October. But we're only covering the irrigation, not the others, I want to be clear.
Roger, did you want to add anything to?
Well, I wanted to add to Mr. Jimomoro's concern about sleeping. Part of the inspection process that we normally go through every so often to every farmer is what I do is I look for any signs of sleeping quarters in the farm. If I do see any kind of indication that it may be used as a sleeping quarters, I would ask them to correct that by removing whatever is there so that it cannot be used as for such purposes.
So that they follow the rules, right? Basically, the setup, so that, when you do that, so that they follow the rules?
Oh, yes. I guess nobody's checking in Cunia.
Okay, I'll just add, that's not ADC land, not ADC.
Okay. So one last thing, just for the edification of our viewers and also for those who first time here, I see some first time faces. Any of you, would you be able to give a real quick synopsis of ADC so that they know what we're? Because I see you looking at each other like, what are they? Someone can give, we have some new guests here and also virtually. So if you can just give a quick rundown of what ADC stands for and, you know, what it's about.
This is where my arms start really flying around because I get very excited. So ADC stands for Agri Business Development Corporation, and this is our 30th year. So we were started in 1994. And there's really three primary things that we're supposed to be doing. The number one goal is to grow more local food for our local communities. The second thing is to develop an agribusiness export business model. Part of that is because in other parts of the world, the export business carries local food. It drives the prices down for local consumers because those fixed costs are put onto the exports. And the third thing that is kind of the fun and exciting part of what we're supposed to be doing is we're called to be an aggressive and dynamic leader. And that is in our statute. And I was at a meeting recently and somebody said, how novel for you to come up with that? And I said, it's in our statute, it's not me, it's what's actually in the statute. So currently, we have land that we own here in the Wahiwa area, somewhere around 5,000 acres. The Lewer Community College Value Add Product Center is our building and it's our land. We also own several Dole buildings. We own the Wahele Irrigation System, we have reservoirs. And then we have about 13,000 acres on Kauai. And we not only operate water systems, but we also operate two hydropower plants. So we have all kinds of fun things that we do. And oftentimes I say, I'm the Wizard of Oz in agriculture because there were big dreams and big expectations for ADC when we were created. And to say that we have an aggressive new board would be the understatement of the last 30 years. And this goal of this board is to really live and breathe and deliver our statute. So I don't sleep a lot, I drink a lot of Diet Coke, and I really love my job. And I gave you my cell phone, so you can always find me or text me. So I'd like to think it's kind of a new and more transparent ADC. One of the things that's also different is I do a weekly report for my board, and it is posted on our website. So I'm talking about where I'm going, who I'm meeting with, what I'm working on. So if you have any questions, you can look at our website or you can give me a call.
Thank you, everyone, for a good presentation. And I can attest, ADC has come a long way. So thank you, everyone, for being a part of it and being patient and gracious to find ways to make it work. So thank you. Moving on to our next presentation, which is 5B. Our presentation is on the update on the 360 California Avenue project. Our presenter tonight is Michael Sakata from the City's Department of Community Services, CBD Division. And Ryan, I think, I'm sorry, not Ryan.
Yes, Ryan couldn't make it. So my name is Mike Sakata. I'm a planner with the Department of Community Services. Joined tonight by representatives of Family Promise, Destiny Azul. She's the Director of Family Services. Elliot Woods, she's the Director of Donor and Community Relations. And Zoe Brooks-Jeffers, who's in the audience, she's the Chief of Staff. So the project began roughly around, well, towards the beginning of April, I'm sorry, the beginning of 2023. The Department of Community Services, our Division C, Community-Based Development Division, was made aware that, or was notified that there was $6 million to be spent down of community development block grant funding. So we began to look at how we could spend it. April 2023, the DCS acquired the 360 California Ave property. Just in case anybody needs a frame of reference, that was the, I believe it was Hope Treatments, Drug Treatment Center, former Hope Drug Treatment Center. Following the acquisition, there was an RFP published on July 24, 2023, soliciting for proposals to lease the property for special needs housing. The RFP was closed in August, on August 21, 2023. Awards were made because there, so there were two properties attached to that RFP, one Ha'ula and 360 California Ave. So awards were, awards were decided in October of 2023. And we believe the negotiating period took a while. We held a public hearing in January, February of 2024. And last, what, or last, I believe, I'm sorry, at the beginning of June, we submitted a resolution to the MD's office for approval. Ryan Katalani, who's the Executive Director of Family Promise, couldn't make it tonight, but he recorded a presentation, kind of giving some information about their program as a whole and also what they have planned for 360 California Ave. So I believe Rachel is going to get on. I apologize, it's a little bit longer than what I believe the 10 minutes. A lot of good information.
I'm sorry I can't be with you here tonight, but thank you for the opportunity to share this presentation. I look forward to getting to know you at another time. And our staff is here to answer any questions you may have. I wanted to share a little bit about what we do at Family Promise and what our project at 360 California Avenue will look like for the community. Family Promise of Hawaii is a nonprofit. We're dedicated to preventing and ending homelessness for families with children. We were founded in 2005. And since then, we've been a trusted and community-based organization that has worked with communities across the island, on Oahu and on Maui, to serve families and help them get back into stable housing as quickly as possible. I want to start off by showing just this quick video that illustrates what we do here at Family Promise.
Hi, my name is Shawna Cobb. This is Bastian Arneson, my youngest baby, he's eight. We've kind of been homeless a lot over the last couple, maybe five years or so. Even as a child, I went through homelessness with my mom a lot, so, yeah. The COVID-19 pandemic really hit hard, and that really put us in a bind, I guess. Me and my kids were living with my mom. I was her caregiver for her and her husband. I think this was like in 2019. And she passed away, so we had to move out of her apartment. And I got a car, so we moved into the car. And then we started sleeping down Waimeanalo side because it was more safer, I felt. And then we eventually moved to Mokalea. They didn't want people on the beaches, and if you weren't on the beaches, you weren't allowed to have a tent. And we had a huge tent because there was so many of us. And the cops were sighting us like every single day. That was probably the biggest challenge. I don't think I was working at that time. I think I only had like some EBT. Compared to other shelters out there, Family Promise is honestly the best. That other shelter that we went to is, like I said, I cried every single night there. It was not the same experience at all as compared to Family Promise. It made things a lot easier for me as a parent, struggling to know that my baby is safe, that we're safe, the family is safe, and yeah.
Unfortunately, the need for Family Promise's services has never been greater. You may have heard about the results from the most recent Oahu Point in Time Cow, which has found that homelessness on Oahu has been rising. In the past two years, it's actually increased 14% across the island. But what is more startling, especially for us at Family Promise, is that family homelessness in particular has actually increased 20% over the past two years. So faster, in fact, 1.4 times faster than the overall rate of increase in homelessness. This means that our children and their family members need our services more than ever. It's been written about in the Star Advertiser. And this is why at Family Promise, we are doing everything we can to expand the organization to be able to serve and end homelessness for more children and their families. In central Oahu in particular, the Lelehua, Mililani, Waileua complex area actually has the fourth highest rate of unsheltered student homelessness on the island. And 10% of the calls we receive already at Family Promise are actually from central Oahu. Now, because we don't already have a facility here currently, that means we're serving them in our other facilities around the island. So with the opening of this new Wahiwa Center, we'll be able to provide services that are closer to home for the families that are already in need in this area. So what we do at Family Promise, I like to break down into three main things that we provide. We provide families with a safe place to sleep, study and get back on their feet. This is our interim housing program, which I'll talk more about in a second. We also provide one-on-one support for families to help them navigate their challenges. Every family has a different story. They come to us in a variety of circumstances. And we work individually to come to understand those individual circumstances and help design the best pathway to housing and long-term stability. This includes case management, also emergency rental assistance and other wraparound services. We also help families build skills and social capital through community. Community has been a huge part of Family Promise since the beginning. And I'll share a little bit more about how we work with our community partners later in the presentation. So at Family Promise, we serve families on Oahu and Maui. On Oahu, our main office is just outside of Chinatown. And we also operate several interim housing facilities in town. So we have a facility in Pearl City that provides temporary shelter to four families at a time. And we have two facilities in the New Uwanu Poli area that between them also serve four families at a time. Later this year, we're planning to open a couple more facilities. Both are in the Moiliili area that between them will serve 10 families at a time. But what we're here to talk about today is our Wahiwa site. We're excited to partner with the city and the community to operate this facility. This facility will be able to provide interim housing or temporary shelter for up to 12 families at a time, possibly more, depending on the family size and composition. So I'd like to give you a little behind the scenes tour of what the Wahiwa Center is going to look like. So the Wahiwa site will have onsite parking for our staff and for families and volunteers. There's a secured entrance to protect the safety of the families and the volunteers and the community. As you can see, all the rooms actually face an internal common area. So it's going to be great for our community building activities and our case management that we provide to all families. There is one shared kitchen for all the families. Just like the rest of our interim housing sites, each family has their own room or potentially multiple rooms, depending on the size of their family, with a door they can lock, giving them the privacy and safety and dignity as they navigate their journey back to stable housing. So how this program works, we get referrals from a variety of sources. Families can actually call or email us directly, but we get referrals from our partner organizations, from outreach workers, from the Department of Education, from city and state officials. We get over 100 calls and emails every week. So when families first reach out, we'll just do a brief screening to make sure they're eligible for our programs. Basically, this means, you know, are they a family that has children? And are they experiencing homelessness? We'll also try to see if we can actually divert them from the shelter program, meaning can we help them get back into stable housing without having to go through the shelter program? Do they just need a little bit of rental assistance to prevent getting evicted in the first place? So even at the front door of shelter, we're already trying to help families get back into stable housing in whatever way we can. If they are eligible for our programs, then we'll schedule an intake meeting. And unfortunately, on any given day, there is typically no space in our interim housing program. Across all of the sites, they tend to be full because the need for families is so great. While they're in our program, we provide not only that interim housing, that safe place to sleep and study and get back on their feet, we provide these very intensive wraparound services to make sure that they are getting back into stable housing, again, as quickly and effectively as possible. So we'll have one-on-one case management onsite. Case management offices will be co-located with the rooms in the facility. So the majority of the families are exiting from our program directly into stable housing. Of course, it doesn't work for every family. Sometimes they do need to be referred to longer-term transitional housing from our programs. Or in rare cases, we may refer them to other shelters if this truly wasn't the right fit for them. Basic eligibility criteria for this is that they are families with children. And this includes single parents, two-parent households, and even multi-generational families. One of Family Promise's core values has always been to keep families together in their time of need. The other main criteria is that they are experiencing homelessness according to the official definition from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we do verify. We have what we call a low-barrier shelter. So we don't have very. We have what we call a low-barrier shelter, so we don't have very many other preconditions besides this. During the intake process, we do gather identification from all family members. If not everyone has identification, we will work with the family to help them get the identification because it is going to be important for their long-term stability and ability to get into housing in the first place. We also perform a background check on all adults in the household to screen for a history of violence or child abuse. Now, our Wahihua site in particular will prioritize families from Wahihua or central Oahu. It'll provide that short-term interim housing for twelve families at a time, forty-eight individuals. And again, we will provide onsite case management and wraparound services. So families, we're working very closely with the families onsite every day to make sure that they're making progress toward their housing goals. And finally, we welcome volunteers. We want to be a part of this community. And if you're interested in being part of this mission, come and talk to our staff. We would love to share more about how this works. We'll be doing regular family-style dinners with volunteers and the families in the programs. We'll invite you to do activities with the kids and, again, educational workshops for the adults. Now, I should mention the family-style dinners. These are only for the families currently in that interim housing site. So we won't be inviting others. It's not going to be just a general meal distribution or food distribution. This is just for the families currently in that program. We work very closely with a wide variety of community partners. We get referrals from sources like the Aloha United Way two-one-one hotline and the Unite Hawaii Coordinated Care Network. We're part of Partners in Care, which is the Oahu Continuum of Care. I'm actually this year the Advisory Board Treasurer. And we're also part of the Aloha United Way Alice Cohort, which is working on issues affecting asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed families. So working families struggling to make ends meet, like many of the families in our interim housing program. We also work with a lot of different community organizations, like Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies, to provide that support, healthcare support for parents and children, Pacific Gateway Center to provide language support for those who have limited English proficiency, the Hawaii Department of Education to make sure that kids are going to school, and so many other partners. This slide, I know it's too small to see you probably, but just has a quick snapshot of some of the over one hundred community organizations that we worked with throughout the years. Ultimately, what we're doing at Family Promise is providing families with these three things: hope, hospitality, and home. Providing families with hope during their darkest hour, providing them with the hospitality through the interim housing program, giving them a safe place to sleep, study, and get back on their feet, and providing them with a pathway to home, which is transformative for their lives, for their children's lives, and possibly the next generation to come. We're excited to open this Wahihua facility, which will truly transform so many lives in the community as we prevent and end homelessness for families with children, some of the most vulnerable families and children in our community. Thank you again, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, so that's.
Thank you very.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a good overview of what Family Promise does and what our program's going to be at three sixty. Where we are right now is, once the resolution to lease the property is transmitted to the city council, then it will go through committee hearing, I believe with the Budget Committee and final adoption. Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at. We are working on some accessibility issues. So we are planning to construct an ADA elevator to get people, participants from the parking, parking floor, from the parking level to the second level where they can be greeted by representatives of Family Promise. So yeah, with that, we can take any questions or you guys may have.
Thank you for the presentation, board members. Any question? Go, Michelle.
I have a few questions. What's the length of stay maximum, length of stay for people?
I believe it was ninety days.
So ninety days for our shelter program, but if, depending on the circumstances, we can extend too as well because, you know, things happen during the time too, so.
Do folks provide job training or, you know, steer them to the right people for job training?
So we do a lot of referrals for like rent-to-work, and we connect with other community partners to do financial literacy as well too, to help them with budgeting, managing finances, things like that too.
Okay, and last question. You mentioned wraparound services. What is that?
So wraparound services is providing additional supportive services besides housing. It can include getting connected to Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies, providing additional case management. So my case managers focus on finding permanent housing, budgeting like I mentioned, finding employment, connecting to education, making sure our Kiki have, they're connected to the DOE liaisons so that have more school supplies, things like that too. So it's a community-based, providing them with hiking kits too as well too. We provide with move-in supplies such as toiletries, formula for babies, things like that. Whatever the family needs, we try to support as much as possible too, because we know cost of living is very expensive here, so that's part of it too. Yeah.
Any other questions, TJ or June?
Do we have a start date for occupancy?
So it's kind of, that's kind of contingent on the approval from the city council. So I believe we have, we, well, I'm sorry. It's kind of determined by how fast we can get the resolution to the city council. So right now, it's with the MB's office for review and approval. Once it's transmitted to council, depending if they are past their committee week or if we can get onto the June committee, then we should be able to hit the, actually, we may, I believe they already had their council meeting, so the earliest would be July for approval, I believe. So that would be, yeah, that would be the earliest.
And will the lack of elevator prevent you folks from opening? Because I know it's not ADA compliant.
Yeah, so talking with Ryan Catalani, he, I believe we are able to open up and they are able to take referrals that may not necessarily need that assistance at that time. But, you know, while we, while DCS works to provide that access, so in the future, if, you know, if there are fair housing complaints, we can, we can at least say that we're doing what we can to address those.
And last question, what is your CUP for? Your conditional use permit, what is the body limit?
I'm sorry?
The conditional use permit that you folks have for that.
So the conditional use permit was for the drug treatment center. So that, so the CUP runs with the property, so the landowner isn't necessarily tied to that CUP. So, so we, yeah.
I'm sorry, would you say that one more time?
The land, so the property owner isn't tied to the CUP. So just because there's a CUP on the property doesn't mean that we have to do what's on that CUP.
No, I'm not asking for you folks to be, I'm just asking what the, what the conditional use permit allows as far as the number of bodies that may be in the building? Because that building
Yeah.
has a conditional use permit, and I can't remember if it's twenty or forty. So I'm wondering if you folks, because it said, Ryan said that you folks can house up to twelve families at a time, up to forty-eight individuals. Is a CUP for forty-eight or is it for more?
The CUP is, so the CUP is for the drug treatment center. So we're not, we're not bound by any, I guess, housing limitations that may be on that CUP. So we're going by what is, what the property is owned for.
And what does the occupancy certificate allow? And I'm only asking because there are, that area is really congested already and not knocking the program in any way. Because you guys, if you know me, you know I'm a firm supporter of helping our families. But I know that parking is limited, so I'm just wondering about things like that.
I'll check this, I'll check this certificate, I'll convince and get back to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions virtually from our board members? Oh, good, Erin, go ahead.
My bottom chair, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I have a question. Ninety days seems like a quick turnaround for a family to find permanent housing. What are some avenues to get families into more stable housing?
Really great question. So like I said, we connect with a lot of community partners. So one of the programs that we refer a lot to is the Rent to Work program. We're also partnered with Housing Solutions, so we have a lot of applicants that apply to their housing because it's affordable. We encourage employment, increasing income, things like that, decreasing their, what do you call, monthly income expenses so that they can afford the rent here. As you know, it's pretty expensive. We partner with a lot of landlords as well too, so we have really great community connections with landlords who are willing to rent to our families, especially those with bad credit, bad rental history, things like that too. So we've gained a lot of partnerships because we know that ninety days is not enough, like you mentioned. And that's why we partner with a lot of them too, so that we can work together.
That's great. I'm glad there's a lot of agencies and support. Naive question, what is considered affordable housing? Is it just based on a family's income?
You know, the Department of Housing and Urban Development says that affordable housing is way less than what we think it is. I've seen a one-bedroom go for at least sixteen hundred here on Oahu. That's obviously not affordable, especially if you have families who are both working parents, and then they go over the income limit for benefits as well. So with the partnering agencies that we work with, like Housing Solutions, their units are more affordable for our families because I believe they work with the city and state as well too as a program. So, yeah, the big question, what is affordable?
I know, that was too philosophical, but that is, thank you.
Which affordable can mean everybody can afford rent here or buy a house, but that's not the case here in Hawaii specifically.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members virtually or here?
Genia, I would just like to share, if you could get my contact information, I would love to put you in touch with some of the union representatives that live in our neighborhood that are looking for people to help get into their apprenticeship and job training programs. I would be happy to connect you folks.
We would love to connect with you too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions from board members or the community at this point? Yes, both of you. Well, who is first? Please go to the mic. Please go to the microphone and say your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Arlene. Are you guys going to be like considering Capuna, the elderly, single people?
So unfortunately, with our program, well, depending, if the Capuna has legal guardianship of minor children under the age of eighteen, then yes, we can accommodate. However, if it's just a single household for the Capuna, unfortunately, our program and our funding doesn't allow.
It's just in Oahu, we have a lot of single homeless people, elderly women, men. Not too many families that I can see. I don't know if they're all in the, you know, in the boonies and everything, but I'm just wondering what percentage of that is going to be designated just for Oahu community as far as the twelve?
Right, so with this property, we, as I said, we can only serve families with minor children. However, if there's a family, a Capuna or a single household that is in need of services, they can definitely call our office and we can still refer to partnering agencies that would fit the requirement for them. Yeah, so we'll still help them out in whatever way we can to find housing. I think the, right, I think the idea is to primarily serve Wahihua residents as much as possible and then potentially outside too as well as because of need. They could, they could, yeah.
And then you had a question? No, oh, I thought you had, you had your hand up earlier. No. Oh, she, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, virtually, last chance, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good presentation, and thank you for caring for Wahihua. We appreciate that. Round of applause for our groups. Very good. Good presentations. At this point, we are moving to item six on our agenda for elected officials. So coming up first is our mayor's representative, Kevin. Did I miss someone? Hi, Dean.
Hi, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you, there's a message I sent you. That's for Wendy regarding the contacts that. If you could pass that on to her, I appreciate it.
Yes, okay, I will at the end of this meeting. Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Kevin O'Shea, Mayor's Representative. Board member Mendelson's question about what is considered affordable housing? When an individual does not have to pay more than, an individual or family does not have to pay more than thirty percent of their income, then housing is considered affordable. That's the baseline. So that's a sort of standard, industry standard, if you will. So just some quick updates in the mayor's newsletter. There's some great information about the new Department of Ocean Safety that we stood up. The mayor also signed a resolution for a voter-approved commission to oversee the Department of Ocean Safety. We have two hundred and seventy-one safety officers within that new department, which I didn't even know, which is pretty amazing. There's an update on improvements to the city's nine-one-one system, which is very important. There's a list of hurricane resources in the mayor's bulletin. June is Hurricane Preparedness Month, so good information there. There's also information about the HECO Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program. There isn't, if you've got a medical condition that requires backup power, there isn't really a lot of detail on that, and that's something we would encourage individuals or families with a condition like that to, you know, to seek help in advance so that they know what they're doing, so they can be prepared for that. You don't want to be waiting to solve that issue once the power goes down. And then lastly, there's a discussion around how the city of County Honolulu and its employees have been helping the Hawaii Food Bank. Some follow-ups. Summer fun, the Department Parks and Recreation is still looking for people to assist with that. They pay about sixteen dollars an hour. If you've got any teenage folks that are home for the summer and looking for something to do, we'd love to have them come work with us. And then meet your city officials. We're holding our, in our eleventh Town Hall meeting this Thursday up in Waileua, the Waileua Elementary School. So if you've got nothing to do and you want to come out, second time around, seven o'clock. Love to see you there. Some follow-ups, more bike racks for the bus. I guess there was a question about if the Wahihua pedestrian bridge is built, will there likely be more bike riders? What do we do with all the bikes? And the Department of Transportation Services responded that the demand for additional bike racks and buses will be monitored after, you know, has the bill, the build-out is completed on the bridge. There was a question about the Achieve Zero dissolution and who would be responsible for providing services in the area? Was that a state or city function? The state has geographic service providers, and they have reassigned the geography to the Akil Oha West Organization. I guess it's, yeah, that's my understanding. DCS followed up on that today. We talked about the Avocado Street property. Any questions on that? Happy to answer anymore. And then on one-twenty-three Mango, again, there was a notice of violation issued on November, I guess it's twenty twenty-two-four, November oh-five, one-eighty-five. And that was issued to the owners of the property to clean up the trash, to cut the weeds, and to remove the property. City doesn't have a lot of jurisdiction there. Others tend to issue those violation notices. I went by this evening on the way to the meeting, and it looks like there's one or two individuals that have permanently encamped themselves on the patio area. We know that the state is working with, who are the folks there? Achieve Zero. I guess Nikki, we've met with her a couple of times also. It's our understanding, she got a GIA grant to purchase that property, and the state's taking that back. But it's going to take some time. There's not a lot really that we can do in the meantime. That's all I have for updates unless there's any questions. That's all I have for updates unless there's any questions.
Before I go to, I, I do have a, uh, one other update regarding the one-two-three Mango. Um, I was told, I didn't get a chance to swing by, but I was told that it got broken into within the last few days. So what you see in the front is there with all the towels and blankets and whoever's, but if you go on the backside, somebody or some people, whoever broke in from the backside, and so on the backside, the door is broken and whatnot, so.
Yeah, so, so we're working with DPP and with uh, with Department of Facilities Maintenance to see if we can get the, the property cleaned up, but I don't have any word back on that. And uh, HPD has been beefing up patrols around that area as well, they've been pretty good going by, but it really is an eyesore, it's gonna get cleaned up.
And apparently, uh, the two individuals, one, the gentleman in particular tends to um, use the restroom in public.
Is that the older fellow that's out there on?
Yeah, yeah, so, so I've gotten some calls about, can you, you know, so then I call HPD to let him know the guy's doing his thing out there, out in the public, you know, but yeah.
Yeah, for the time being, I think that's probably gonna be the best, if we see individuals out and we just make that phone call, HPD.
Okay, okay, open to the board members, any questions for our mayor's representative? Okay, virtually, board members, any questions for, oh, Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, hey Kevin, got uh, four hits for you, already took care of one on Mango Street, but.
Hey Dean, sorry, Dean, wait, we got some noise going on, we can't hear you, I don't know if you can hear it, but it's like a, I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Kind of a motorbike, sorry about that, Dean, could you repeat your question, please?
Okay, first of all, thank you for taking care of the Mango Street question for me. Uh, next one, you brought it up, HECO and its blackout up here yesterday in Oahu. Uh, it started out in the heights, then worked its way down to the entire city of Oahu. Uh, don't know what happened there, if you could find out, since we don't have a HECO representative or utility person coming uh to the meeting.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
The power was out downtown the last week also, it was crazy.
Got to stay home a few days extra. The other thing, um, could you check with OTS and find out if and when will they ever start a twenty-four hour service for Oahu North Shore, Oahu to Kana'oe? Every place else on the island has a twenty-four hour bus line, except from Pro City out to Kana'oe. And that would be our fifty-two route, yeah? Or fifty-one, I forget now.
Questions, when is, will the fifty-two route, is it planned to be operated twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, because right now it stops at, uh, the last bus to come around from the North Shore is at about twelve-thirty AM. So between twelve-thirty AM and four AM, uh, there's no bus, and there are still people waiting at the bus stop to head back to the North Shore after their job from working.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you, and then uh, I think that's the one, I got, that was it. Thank you.
June, you have to use the mic, thank you.
Yeah, fifty-two stops in Haleiwa.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dean, sorry.
No, no, it was just a thing of um, the fifty, well, I don't know which one goes down to Haleiwa and then comes around from the other side, from Kana'oe to Haleiwa Town, because they changed it all. Used to be called the Circle Island Run, but uh, you know, for years back since I started on the board, we've been trying to get OTS to start an evening run, you know, midnight run bus, uh, one each go each direction about every two hours. And, but they said, no, there's enough ridership, but I think that's uh, far gone already.
Yeah, and you're right, we did, um, we did push for that several years ago, um, and they did try, if you remember, they did try, um, at our request, they did implement uh, a test for the twenty-four hour run. And if I remember correctly, and again, this is several years ago, um, the ridership was very low, they didn't, yeah, so.
Anything else, you know, midnight time, but they offered, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean, any other questions from board members virtually? Hearing none locally, go ahead, TJ.
Kevin. Running out of brain cells tonight. Um, so the bus from Alamoana to Haleiwa turns around at Haleiwa Park is a fifty-two. And then from Alamoana through Kana'oe to Haleiwa, turns around and goes back is the sixty. And yes, the fifty-two does not run twenty-four hours, although I think it runs pretty late, and the sixty might run twenty-four hours, but it, at one time, the fifty-two went completely around the island. It was the only bus that did go around the island, and I think that's what Dean was referring to, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, TJ.
Okay, any other questions, public, from the public, yes, go ahead. Don't forget to say your name.
Yeah, my name is Warren, I'm with Sherar Savior Hawaii, Sherar Savior Oahu, we're a four-square church. Uh, I wanted to thank the mayor again and the core team and Kevin for helping guide me through some issues that I had. But my question was, uh, the one-two-three Mango Street, is, is Nikki still owner? And if so, is there a contact for her?
Go ahead.
To answer the question, yes, Nikki is still is the owner, yeah. Uh, for, for Nikki, um.
I, I can get to you after, I got.
I'm not certain, I can give out Nikki's number.
Yeah, I can give it to after. Okay, any other questions for the mayor's representative? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, keep moving on, our next, we have Kelly for Councilmember Matt Wire.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
No, you're good.
Can you hear me now? Okay, thanks. Um, so good evening, uh, Chair and members of the board, um, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Um, just a couple of things, uh, Councilmember was pleased to be invited to the Oahu SPCA last week. Um, it's one of the few operating adoption and clinic centers on Oahu, and he um definitely appreciates the role that they play in our Oahu community. Legislatively, um, he did put in some funding for the Oahu pool here to um be replaced. Um, so hopefully that gets pushed through and we can uh, kind of get that issue resolved once and, once and for all. Um, this Wednesday, Councilmember is also pleased to be invited to the Oahu Lions. Um, uh, I guess the um, recognizing and honoring the twenty-twenty-four Lelehua High School valedictorians at their, um, I guess their annual meeting. Um, and also the um Achieve Zero property at Mango Street and Avocado Street. Um, Councilmember Wire does continue, his office does continue to urge the administration to stay on top of both properties and uh, we do continue to field calls as well, so um, just hoping for the best for both of the properties and get that issues resolved as well. And that's actually all that I have for tonight, if anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Okay, go ahead, June.
Uh, clarification on the Oahu Lions, that's actually a scholarship.
A scholarship, excuse me.
Yeah, for five individuals.
Correct.
They may be the same as the, they could be valedictorians also, but yeah, it's only five members for a scholarship.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Councilmember from, go ahead, TJ.
Just a comment, uh, Kelly, would you please express my thank you to Ms. Lenny at your office?
I'm sure too.
To Lenny.
Okay.
At the office, I understand a community resident contacted them today, and he was pleasantly surprised to get a call back and some information from her, and he actually told me, I didn't expect the call back, let alone one so quickly, ha, ha, ha. So please thank her for tending to that question.
No problem, thank you, thank you for your support.
Hey, any other questions virtually from board members? Okay, from the community, virtually or locally here, yes, go ahead, you can introduce yourself at the mic. Standby, Kelly.
I am Terry, um, not sure if I'm in the right category, but um, I think um, you guys all saw the accident on Maheli the other week or two, where the car went into the um, the, the home, yeah. Anyway, they were doing donuts, which is like, you know, going round and running around, and um, wanted to know if I could put in a request to have the speed humps on Kaluhe'a, Maheli, and Kaliponi on Kialani, and Le'apapuih, and Cypress on California Ave. California Ave might need more, but that was, you know, all that I could consider. Would that be?
Yeah.
Oh, would that be with Matt Wire's office?
So we would work together with them, so in general, when we've had this in the past, um, and we did put speed humps, um, you know, um, behind Foodland, we worked on those, um, and then also up going um, Glen Avenue and whatnot. So those, but there is a process, so if you don't mind, if you can send me a letter that's saying this, these are the requests and why. And then what happens after that is that we do have to meet with the Department of Transportation Services, and they do an assessment, because there's a difference of speed humps and, and the lower speed bumps. So there's, the bumps are higher, the humps are a little bit, a little bit flatter, a little bit. So they do look at those kinds of uh details, so if you can just send uh what your request is, what your concern is. Um, it is a process though, because there has to be that, that process of DTS coming out and doing a survey of the area. And then there also has to be community meetings, so in the past, we would hold three different community meetings on that um, before it would get passed, or sometimes it didn't get passed, but.
Have they been brought up before?
For other areas, like that we did put speed, like, um, like I was saying, behind, uh, I think it's Lemmy Street, behind Foodland, we, we put those in, um, the ones on Glen Avenue, um, and Palm Drive, you know, and so it does happen, but it is a process, but the first step is to write, write me a letter, send it to, I mean, to our board, and then we put it on our agenda for discussion and whether it moves forward or not after, it just takes, it is a process, but, but we'll work on it.
Uh, these are all streets that are, that have the crosswalk.
Yeah.
In them, and um.
So those are things that the Department of Transportation Services will look at, because the crosswalks are for the public, so you don't necessarily put a speed hump right by a crosswalk, you know, so, you know, so all of that has to factor in in what can and cannot be done. And they do speed um tests, you know, you'll see that they put that board that goes on the, on the road to see how many, the traffic, you know, how, how many people actually drive on that road, and all kinds of, you know, studies have to be done.
I will write the letter, but um, also, the money has been appropriated for the sidewalks of her California Kialani. How about money for lower, below Cam Highway of California in Kialani?
Yeah, I'm not.
Is there any kind of um, request to put that in?
I'm not aware, but we can, we can certainly put the question in again, and that would be with Department of Transportation Services.
So I put that in my letter too.
No, that'll be separate, because the speed humps are different from um, what you're talking about repaving, so it's two different, but we can talk after this. Okay, thank you. Oh yeah, go ahead, June.
They have, they did a donut down at the bottom of Rose Street, coming up here, I noticed that. Yep, they burned rubber.
I think they learned, I mean, look at what happened, my goodness, they gotta be safe. Okay, any other questions from the public here? Any other questions from the public? No, and Kelly, I'll be in contact with you too.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to our next, um, our Governor Josh Bean, is Rosemary here? Okay, uh, moving on to Senator's um office, Rosemary? I mean, Aluri, I'm sorry, Aluri?
Oh, hey Chair, can you hear me?
Oh, hi David, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, sorry David, David for Senator Delacruz's office.
Hi, uh, so, uh, good evening, um, and long time no see to everyone. Uh, I just wanted to talk about the newsletter that you guys probably got in your mailboxes recently. Uh, so there was a major piece of legislation that got passed that really helps the taxpayers. Um, that was House Bill two-four-zero-four, and that was signed by the governor uh into law several weeks ago. Um, and it's a major tax relief package that uh provides uh dollars back in the pockets of residents. So basically, to give you an example of how this will help, it, uh, by twenty thirty-one, it'll take the current standard deduction up to twenty-four thousand, it's currently at four thousand four hundred dollars. So by twenty thirty-one, the standard deduction for a joint uh filer will increase to twenty-four thousand, and for a single filer, it'll increase to twelve thousand. Um, and we're also making changes in the tax code, so it kind of brings everyone up um, in terms, so that uh, as in, uh, minimum wage increases and wages begin to increase, uh, they're, they won't be hit with a larger uh tax liability, since their income will be increasing. So to give you an example, currently, a family of four making a median income of eighty-eight thousand dollars, which is a very um average income level uh for a family of four, under the current laws, they'd be paying five thousand dollars in taxes. Uh, by twenty thirty-one, that same family will see a savings of three thousand six hundred dollars, and they would only be paying a thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars. Um, and these tax changes were made uh for multiple income levels, since uh we are adjusting the tax brackets and we're increasing the standard deduction, so anyone that takes a standard deduction uh would see that benefit. Um, so basically, it keeps money uh in the pockets of families, so that they can use it for rent, uh, you know, household groceries, things like that. Uh, all right, the second thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, you know, the value-added center was, it has been getting a lot of great uh media coverage within the past couple of weeks, I don't know if you guys saw the Hawaii News Now Sunrise uh section, uh, that Senator and Chancellor Penalozzo was in, uh, but it's getting a lot of great uh media coverage, uh, please continue to watch out for that. Um, and then we are current, currently, uh, you know, continuing to work on some of the interim projects, um, uh, like working with uh DAGs on the Oahu Civic Center project, uh, as well as some of the school-led projects, like the new admin building at Lelehua High School, um, and trying to pursue of, you know, further improvements to Hu, Hu Yoshida Stadium. So, uh, we're, we're starting to work towards the interim, we just came out of session. Um, and there are, even though the session is over, um, the governor has one major deadline left over. Um, I believe next week is his intent to veto list, um, so based on what the governor provides in his list, he can consider to either uh sign those bills into law, uh, veto those bills that are on that list, or allow some of those bills to turn into law without a signature. Um, so that intent to veto list will come out next week, and then I believe in the second week of July is when uh the governor actually has to make a decision. Um, uh, so we'll see some of uh the governor's decisions in terms of legislation that will be making that list over the next couple of weeks. So that's the only updates I had, and um, I will be sending uh the newsletter links to the Neighborhood Assistant, um, so that it can be included as part of the minutes, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, David, board members here, any questions for Senator's office? Board members virtually, any questions for Senator's office, Erin?
Hi David, um, thank you for joining us today. Last, last Neighborhood Board meeting, I asked um about funding for DLNR, I know that that was um not part of the sledge, and I know a couple, you know, there was this, you know, big media blitz of supporting DLNR with this recruiting class of forty-two, and they haven't received any pay raises, and then there's a new recruiting class, it sounds like they might not get hired. Um, what is the update, ask kind of for an update um on what's gonna happen with our DLNR? Are we gonna continue to build and support that agency?
Uh, well, they do, they received a pretty um, big, large amount of money uh in the last legislative session. I know they're using that to help with the recruitment of um, future cadets. Um, for instance, from that pot of funds, uh, they're using it to like help house the cadets in hotels, you know, uh, pay for training and things like that, I can get. In hotels, you know, uh, pay for training and things like that. I can get a bit, a bit more descriptive update for the next meeting, uh, so that. Uh, we have some of those details from, um, DLNR directly.
Thank you, David. No, it's been a significant input, it like, um, impact on our natural environment and just the presence of having more officers working 24 hours. I think since that new recruiting class, there's just been more vigilance on our natural resources. And so I would love to see that continue.
Yep, no problem. And then, um, I failed to mention earlier, um, I don't know if, uh, board members and members of the community saw, but there was a major push, uh, for biosecurity funding this year. Um, you know, I believe last year late, uh, we, you know, we did do like a CRB outreach, um, and treatment on. Uh, Royal Palm Drive in October, uh, sorry, um, but. This year with the increase of activity with invasive species, uh, you know, like Little Fire and Coconut Rhinocis Brito. Uh, the, 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 the invasive snakes and, um, some of the other type of invasive species that are coming in. A major thing that the legislature did was, uh, convert a lot of the existing positions from special funds over to general funds. So that'll help Department of Ag basically do like emergency type of responses with their special funds. So that can be used for response type of activities rather than having to pay for salaries and bodies and, uh, fringe and things like that. Uh, the, the really big piece came in when we provided, uh, about $20 million in brand new funding. Uh, to directly address, uh, some of the invasive species issues. So, um, so like I mentioned, there was major funding for LFA, CRB. Uh, even for feral chicken type of trapping and, uh, you know, in, uh, and response. Uh, as well as a brown snake tree, uh, koki. And then, uh, invasive species, uh, outreach in terms of like, uh, education for the public so that they're aware of. What types of things to look out for. Um, so that's $20 million in brand new funding. Um, the DOA also got a couple of new, uh, powers like. Um, a emergency declaration for biosecurity invasive species response. Uh, so they have new power so that they can better respond to, uh, major activity that's happening. Uh, so that's something that we'll be working on with them over the next year because, uh, with this brand new funding and these new type of laws on the books. Uh, it's gonna most likely make a very big impact on that front. So that's something that I wanted to also highlight.
Okay, thank you, David. Oh, good, uh, we have a question for you. Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, it's more of a thank you to the Senator because the, um, Royal Palms on Palm Drive are looking good. And there's this place right on Cam Highway across, um, from, the, well, right on Cam Highway going towards Milani. That had a ton of Royal Palms. They're all dead. Or dying anyway. None of them have tops anymore. So thank you for his quick response on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, board, oh, TJ?
Thank you, David, for your presentation. I hope Daddyhood is doing you good. Happy Father's Day, by the way. Um, and I just wanted to encourage, if you don't mind, um, if Senator or someone from his office could reach out to. Um, Michelle Uemoto as she is about to, uh, submit her RFP. For the Federal Residential Reentry Center. I know that they've been, uh, missing each other on phone calls, so. Um, it's coming up soon. And so if we could, uh, if, again, if you could ask Senator to give her a call. Um, to make contact about that. I know that, uh, State Representative Peruso has been out there as has. Um, Councilmember Matt Wire. And I think it would be great if we could get Senator De La Cruz, um, up to speed on what's going on out there with this federal program. And, uh, any support from the Senator would be appreciated. Thank you.
Uh, that's the one on Really Kino, correct?
Uh, Lakeview?
Yeah, Lakeview, correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Senator's office? Okay, thank you, David.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, and moving on, we have Representative, um, Representative Peruso.
So, um. A lot of action on the street tonight. Uh, so, good evening, Chair, board members, folks on Zoom. Um, I wanted to reiterate, um, you know, the Kaukau for Kiki program is ongoing and they're still accepting applications and. Um, the, uh, folks can still sign up. So, uh, if you have children, um, there's an easy online application. Or they can just come by the food distributions. It's on Tuesday morning, um, down at this, uh. At the freshwater park. And, um, I also wanted to make sure to remind folks of two events that are coming up. So on July 1st, at Wahiwa Elementary, um, Malama Ohana is going to be conducting, um. A listening session and that is in regard to the death of Gianna Bradley and, and then more broadly, um. The struggles we're facing a, around Oahu and actually across the state. Um, with respect to our children in foster care and in adoptive care. So. Um, it's an opportunity for the community to come together and to talk about, um, you know, to provide ideas, to provide feedback and insights. Um, for this working group, um, so that they can then offer guidance to, uh, child welfare services. And I think that's going to be a really important convening. So that's going to be July 1st, Wahiwa Elementary, um, starts at 5:30. And they'll be supplying bentos, um, provided by Marion's Catering. So that's nice. And I, I think that. I, I really encourage people to attend because I, I think that that. Um, particular incident was very traumatic and, and that we should as a community kind of come together and talk about that. Um, the second event, I again, it's already been brought up this evening, but July 11th at Lelehua High School, 6 to 8 p.m. I believe it's in the library, but I'll double check. We'll, we'll be sending out some messaging from our office, but, um. Uh, for folks to come together and talk about the draft EIS, um, for the military leases. I know that's been. Um, a topic that has been a source of a lot of consternation for the community and. Um, this is our opportunity to talk about, in particular, what we'd like to see happen with Po'ohmohok. So that is, um, you know, native forests, some of, um, habitat for some of our native birds that are, are very rare and close to extinction. So. Um, encourage folks to attend that as well. And other than that, um, I, I don't have anything else, but I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Oh, hold on, hold on. Board members, board members, any, any questions for Representative? Board members here? Hearing none. Board members virtually, any questions? Okay, to the public, any questions?
I'm Arlene. Because it's hurricane season, are there any plans in effect that I can go to or see or view, or what are the plans? In case a hurricane hits, um, for the homeless people? Because there's a family right now that's walking around, you know, so, with kids too, so.
Okay, so, um, well, we will be working with Kealaho and, so Kealaho is a new homelessness or houseless provider in our community. Um, Kealaho West, uh, they've taken the place of Achieve Zero. Um, but more broadly speaking, in Wahiwa and in Launani Valley. Um, we've organized our community down to the neighborhood level. So we have about 35 folks who we are equipping with ham radios and. Providing training to use the ham radios because we have a repeater at the top of California that we want to take advantage of. And in case of some kind of, um, hurricane or other, uh, climate related event. Um, if communication lines come down or cell towers come down, then we still want to be able to communicate out of, outside of. Um, those communities that might be blocked off. So, um, we are working with the City and County, um, with DEM, Department of Emergency Management. Um, to develop more plans, but we have a HARP team, um, in Wahiwa. So that's Hawaii Hazard Awareness and Resilience Plan. Um, and if you want to learn more about that, um, there's more information available at my website. So that's representativeamypruso.com. And there's a page devoted to that and it also includes our plan.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Do you know, um, this past week, the sirens went off twice? Why?
I heard that and, and I'm not sure. I don't have an answer with respect to why those sirens went off.
Any other questions for Representative?
Or if anybody else knows.
Or virtually, does anyone have an answer virtually? Any questions virtually for Representative? Okay, well, thank you very much. And, and it is, uh, for everyone's reminder, we do have in our announcement section. Um, a long chunk of information on the Army invitation to the DEA because we do know that is an important, um, issue going on. And as we did say, that there is going to be a meeting at Wahiwa, uh, at Lelehua High School. So please follow up on that if you're interested. Okay, uh, right now we are down to our board business. The board members, we can go through these. Uh, looking for approval of minutes for the regular meeting of Monday, March 18th, and again, Monday, May 20th. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as is?
I move to accept.
Any opposed? Yep, second. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a first and second. Any objections to accepting the minutes of Monday, March 18th and Monday, May 20th? Um, board members here, TJ? Okay, hey June? Uh, Michelle? Okay, virtually, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, Dean?
Aye.
Okay, and myself, aye. Thank you very much. The minutes of March 18th and May 20th have been accepted. Chairs report and board actions, call for disclosures from board members, any meetings you need to, uh, report on, board members, uh. Michelle? June? TJ? Okay, Aaron?
No, nope.
Dean?
Nine.
Okay, nine?
Oh, sorry. None. In Dutch, in Dutch and English, sorry.
Okay, um, correspondence and distribution, uh, it is in the announcements. And again, uh, the correspondence that came in. Uh, recently was from the Army inviting everyone for the, to review the draft environmental impact statement. Uh, if you need that information, it is listed on our agenda. But again, please don't forget that there will be a meeting. On Wednesday, July 10th, again, at Lelehua High School on Thursday, July 11th, and also one at Kahuku on the 9th. So it is important if people can be there. Uh, regarding board actions, discussion and vote if necessary on any of the agenda items listed, as well as any of the following. There's nothing to vote on, on our agenda. Chair is going forward and Wahiwa General Hospital, uh, we know now that it is open and that it is, the new name is the, um. Queen's Hospital Wahiwa. So round of applause and we got Wahiwa in the name of that. So round of applause for us again. Okay, and for our community. Uh, committee reports, education, Sylvia is not here, she's traveling military, uh. We did have our report from our military counterpart, um, with updated information. Transportation, Joel is not here. Water, no report on water. And Hawaiian Affairs, Dean, anything from you, Dean, for Hawaiian Affairs?
It was just the information I passed on to your chair for Wendy. That would be, uh, Kamakao, uh, or, um.
Yes.
Yeah, give him time, thanks. See, I forgot his name already.
Got it. No worries. I wrote it down. I'll pass it on to him.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, for announcements, we're coming in close. So I'll just read A and a very short, brief thing of B. And then Michelle, you can do C. June, you can do D and TJ E, and then I'll close it up with the mahalo and aloha. So board, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, real quick, um, the name for Wahiwa Hospital is now Queens Medical Center, Queens Medical Center, Wahiwa.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so announcements, board meeting, the next Wahiwa Woodmore Village Neighborhood Board Meeting is on Monday, July 15th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. Here at the Wahiwa District Park's Poliqua Meeting Room. Please check the Neighborhood Commission Office website for any updates. And item B, again, we mentioned it is the Army's invitation to review the draft, their draft environmental impact statement, the EIS for proposed land retention. At Kahuku Training Area, Po'ohmohok Training Area, and Makua in Military Reservation Hawaii. Again, there will be, uh, you can go to the website to review the EIS, but there are three public meetings scheduled at Y9 District Park. On Tuesday, July 9th, at Kahuku High School and Intermediate School on Wednesday, July 10th, and at Lelehua High School on Thursday, July 11th. Uh, again, please reference our agenda if you need that information again. And Michelle, take item C.
Military June Training Advisory. June 1st through the 24th. Oh, sorry. Um, artillery live fire on Schofield barracks, day and night. Live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. No live fire on June 4th, 10th, 13th through the 15th. Um, June 3rd, 3rd through the 14th. Oh, sorry. 17th through the 30th, East Range Ranger and Jungle Tactics, Small Arms Blank Fire, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And June 28th, Aviation Repelling and Extraction Training on East Range, day only.
Okay, June?
People's Open Market Tuesdays, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Wahiwa District Park. Note that the, um, the mark, open market is temporarily being held on the Kialani Avenue side up by the swimming pool.
Okay, TJ?
Um, thank you. Uh, information, contact phone numbers, um, please remember that all of these numbers are prefaced with the area code 808. City Streets Pot-Hole Hotline at 768-7777. The State Streets Pot-Hole Hotline is at 536-7852. The Heart Maintained Roads Pot-Hole Hotline, that was a mouthful, is at 566-2299. The City's Refuse Inspector Office is at 768-5220. Schofield Noise Complaints is at 656-3487. Email at USAGHI dot COM REL at gmail dot com. Or the 25th Infantry Division Public Affairs Office at 655-4756. And you can email them at the same email, USAGHI dot COM REL at gmail dot com. Thank you. One breath.
Thank you, everyone. And for item five, again, this is just a mahalo and aloha for, um, tonight's meeting. We want to just remember our military heroes. Um, we want to thank everyone who participated with making lay or placing wreaths on Memorial Day and also. Those who worked tirelessly to honor King Kamehameha with the draping on his statue. It was beautiful ceremony. It was a great celebration of King Kamehameha Day Parade on Tuesday, June 11th. So we thank everyone who helped make those ceremonies a fantastic event for the City and County of Honolulu. And with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Mahalo.